This meeting due to agenda limitations during transition. No worse. All right, pretend you didn't hear that. I'm gonna say it again. Thanks, everybody for coming tonight. When we had other things to do, this session was necessary to address time sensitive actions needed from counsel before a court hearing scheduled for next week. And it wasn't able to be included in the previous meeting due to agenda limitations during transition. We take our responsibility to use taxpayer money wisely very seriously. Thank you, Laurie. And by meeting tonight, we can help North Plains keep from spending any more than we have to. I'll talk about that in a moment, but I hope that we can work towards feeling comfortable, asking questions about agenda items for clarification without raising anyone's blood pressure. I think there was a lot more angst over tonight's meeting than maybe the actual agenda items warrant. Sometimes a council business has to be discussed in closed executive session. Those aren't our rules to make, and the city has legal guidance advising when topics meet specific Oregon revised statutes criteria. Setting up this meeting was done in good faith and took longer than usual for the city due to circumstances beyond anyone's control, and the only option was tonight. There are two executive sessions based on our city attorney review, since there are two items with different O R S codes that we were told had to be held separately. I'll always try and share what I can, but there are restrictions on what I can say, so this will sometimes be high level without additional details. This is meeting number two for us. And we're still actively learning, so I appreciate your patience as we walk through this agenda tonight a little bit differently, with more focus on conversational dialogue between a new team. I'm good at lots of things, but not Robert's procedure yet, so I'm gonna talk through the steps as we go along. And I'm gonna leverage Bill's expertise. That's gonna let me focus on the content of our discussion. The last thing I ever want to do is watch myself on YouTube. But thank you so much to the kind people who've given me some really heartfelt support. It means a lot. Imagine how most of us would feel doing this up in front of everybody, right? So I'm considering this new council's first meeting a win for several reasons. We were human and connected with the community, which is a core value for me personally. We had sensible things to say on topics that were sometimes new and require further review. We functioned as a group without having interacted that way before, and I'm excited to keep building rapport. With the election over and a new council seated, it's time to look forward for common good future and move past the knee jerk negativity about whatever doesn't come from the right side. I'll say again that if any previous elected officials want to come share their experience with us and be part of where we're going, I honestly welcome input from all perspectives and would like to listen. I hope we can stop tearing down when we have a community in need of healing. Aside from that, I appreciate any suggestions on how to improve communication and encourage folks to ask questions directly rather than jumping to conclusions. There was an awful lot of heartburn about tonight, which really doesn't bear out what the actual agenda is going to be. Back to why we're together tonight. This agenda was proposed in partnership with the city manager and attorney to follow up on ballot referendum case, which attempted to keep our votes from being counted on the urban growth boundary issue. That was originally authorized by outgoing council and during campaigning, members of the new council were pretty clear about having a different viewpoint. It's time sensitive for us to discuss whether to continue the appeal on that case. And a quick decision will keep us from spending more of our tax dollars before the next hearing happens next week. Our community voices through our votes spoke out strongly against a proposed U G B expansion in May and again in November. Unfortunately, that case still ended up in court with the city on the wrong side of the constitutional argument to make sure our votes were counted. And the city lost the case. As part of that standard legal process, the city will have to pay for attorney expenses incurred by Friends of Smart Growth, the activist organization that advocated for North Plains citizens. The previous council chose to continue appealing the referendum case despite what ended up being a clear loss according to the judge and lack of community support for pursuit of the original oversized U G B. While it's unfortunate that we have to pay that bill now, this council will review options to negotiate the cost down and reallocate contingency budget funds already authorized to continue the appeal to help cover those legal fees instead. The other executive session that we had earlier today is to inform this council about another item initiated by the previous council related to our community policing for some city owned property. We're just now hearing about it, so we'll be determining next steps and how much we can say about it, but it does not involve any urgent safety issues. And I'd like to take a moment to thank our chief and deputies for all the hard work they do. I'm looking forward to a more thorough review of opportunities to address. Thanks, everybody. That's everything I had to say, and I appreciate your patience letting me get all that out. All right, we have some public comment and we did receive. Thank you so much for the folks who submitted things via email, and we have all, as you saw, reviewed that. Due to the length, I'm not gonna go ahead and read that out loud tonight since we have a stack of public comments. So the way that we're going to arrange this tonight, because it's a bit different than our usual agenda session, is I'm going to at least attempt to bundle our public comment together, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the conversation that we need to have. So I have four comment cards from Cindy Hurst, and I'm gonna ask you to accommodate us with one minute per card. And I invite you to go ahead now.
Well, two of the items are on agenda items that you haven't even discussed.
Okay, and I'm happy to hear from you at that point if you have further comments, but let's go ahead and get this out of the gate. Would you like to come sit?
Uh, yes, I will. One minute.
Considering that there are four comment cards and I have a whole nother stack, I think, let's start there and see where we get. Or would you like to arrange your time differently? You can say whatever you'd like from these four options. What's gonna work best for you?
I won't say it because I have one minute. Um, I have two items under public comment. And I think I'm gonna choose the most important one. And this is regarding under, excuse me, my name is Cynthia Hurst, and I'm a citizen here in North Plains. And I live at the address that's on the card. Under your under your unfinished business on the agenda, this council will go into executive session to discuss urban growth boundary referendum decision appeal. Since there is no public agenda item regarding this appeal, I have, excuse me, a few comments and questions about the executive session. Sorry, I'm Mayor Ariel Goodwin, Councilors Mandy Hagedorn, Aaron Dunbarrow, and Katie Redding were elected in the City of North Plains in November and sworn in on January 6th. First question, why are these newly sworn officials Mayor Goodwin, Councilors Hagedorn, Dunbarrow, and Katie Redding being party to a confidential legal discussion in which they each have a conflict of interest?
Would you like to pause and get an answer for that, or are you?
I got my one minute.
I'm entitled to ask you questions, Cindy, and I'd appreciate you having this be a bidirectional conversation.
Uh, not in public comment, it's not.
Actually, I think that's my decision. But go ahead.
Answering please my comments, please. Each as candidates received $2,566.79 from the Friends of Smart Growth. There were no other campaign contributions shown on the Oregon Campaign Finance Activity Report for each candidate. The Friends of North Plains Smart Growth Political Action Committee is now discontinued, but not before giving funds to the Friends of Smart Growth. Friends of Smart Growth is a political action committee controlled by Ariel Goodwin, Aaron Dunbarrow, and Mandy Hagedorn with Aaron Nichols as director. Aaron Nichols is a plaintiff in the U G B referendum suit against the City of North Plains. Newly sworn counselor Katie Redding is the chief plaintiff in the U G B referendum suit against the City of North Plains. The other plaintiffs are Loretta Furrow, Jason Reynolds, Benjamin Williams, David Van Ash, James Long, Linda Gallus Merton, the Friends of North Plains Smart Growth, which received cash contributions from two of the plaintiffs, Linda Gallus and Dave Van Ash. And the Save Helvestia is a plaintiff, and Dave Van Ash and Aaron Nichols are steering committee members of the organization. Counselor Mandy Hagedorn was also, has also made a contribution to the Friends of North Plains Smart Growth. How can you four elected participants participate in a discussion about litigation against the City of North Plains when you have received money or goods or services from some of the plaintiffs through political action committees to get elected to your positions? How is it not a financial conflict of interest when the only contributor for the campaign is Friends of Smart Growth, which is controlled by Aaron Nichols, a plaintiff in the suit against the City of North Plains? How is it not a financial conflict of interest when Aaron Nichols, David Van Ash, Linda Gallus, and Mandy Hagedorn made cash contributions to the plaintiff Friends of North Plains Smart Growth through the Friends of Smart Growth? Integrity is a person's quality of being honest. Mayor Goodwin, Councilors Hagedorn, Dunbarrow, and Redding, I'm asking that you recuse and absent yourself from any discussion about the U G B referendum lawsuit as a sign of integrity, especially when you took campaign money from some of these plaintiffs. And all of you are active members of the Friends of Smart Growth. When Counselor Redding, as the chief plaintiff, you should not even be allowed to participate in the lawsuit discussions and decisions, no matter what loophole your attorney goes through.
All right, time check about thirty seconds.
I'm going to finish. I've got two sentences. Your gang of four accused the former council of corruption. What is this if not putting the lawsuit plaintiffs ahead of what is best for the City of North Plains for money? Any decision about the litigation should be made by the three city councilors who are not involved in this convoluted, financially driven tangle.
Oh dear. Okay, that's time, Cindy. Thank you so much. Um, I'm sure that I'm familiar with your professional background, but I don't think that it's in law.
Did I say anything about law?
I didn't say that you did, but can you confirm for me? I'm sorry, can you confirm for me whether or not you have a legal background?
No, I don't have a legal background.
Okay, so as appropriate, thank you so much for raising this question, and I appreciate being able to address it publicly. I'm gonna give Counselor Redding a chance momentarily. But let me assure you that we have carefully considered this, and we have consulted with our city attorney, who has clearly stated that there is no conflict of interest. There is perhaps a potential conflict of interest, but due to the legal framework already in place, there is no actual conflict of interest as defined legally by the Ethics Commission. We have also reached out proactively to raise this issue with the Ethics Commission and have clearance to continue from our city attorney. That's the writing.
Um, I just wanna read this confirmation of waiver and assignment of interest. Whereas I am one among many plaintiffs in Reading et al versus Lesmeister et al, Washington County Circuit Court Case Number Two Four C V One Three Two Five One. The litigation. Whereas I became involved in the litigation because I was the chief petitioner for North Plains referendum petition N P dash two three dash zero two, which became measure thirty four dash three twenty seven. Whereas I am not involved in the financial aspect, aspects of the litigation. I have not paid my lawyers any money for or related to the litigation. My fellow plaintiffs have been fully responsible for that and have indemnified me against any costs and expenses related to the litigation. And my lawyers do not expect payment from me. Whereas should the court award attorney fees and or costs to the plaintiffs in the litigation or any appeal, I have waived any portion of that recovery and instead have assigned it to have assigned it in equal shares to my fellow plaintiffs in the litigation. Whereas I have recently been elected to serve on the North Plains City Council. Whereas I wish to inform my fellow members of the city council and the public at large that I have no financial interest in the litigation. Now, therefore, I hereby represent and affirm that I believe I have no personal financial interest in the litigation. To the extent I have any personal financial interest in the litigation, I irrevocably assign it to the other plaintiffs in the litigation in equal shares. This includes any right or interest in attorney fees, costs and disbursements, or other recovery that may be obtained in the litigation.
So I think that pretty much sums it up, and let's move on to, thank you, Cindy. Let's move on to James Atkins regarding the U G B. I appreciate that you've only got the one card, so do your best and we're not gonna time them.
Uh, Mayor Goodwin, Council President Dunbarrow and City Councilors, my name is James Atkins, and I am here on behalf of Chris Edmonds, and he was very ill tonight, so that's why he can't be here.
Oh, no, sorry about that.
And so I'm delivering this letter from him on this guy. On behalf of Chris Edmonds and the Eastside Property Owners Group, which are the lands that stretch between McCane Creek, Jackson School Road, and Highway Twenty Six. This group includes the Van Donaldins, Baboskis, Waltazes, Van Radens, and the Vanderses. These are all long term property owners, and most families have lived in or farmed around North Plains for a century or more. This meeting was scheduled very abruptly and concerns several very serious steps that appears this council is contemplating. While we respect the desire of this council to determine issues within its purview, there are several points we would like to ensure are considered. The lands owned by the Eastside Group do not grow food crops. There is not a viable subsistence option for these families from the land. Do impart the size of the parcels and the dissection of Jackson School Road. All these families rely on outside non-farm income to earn a living. These lands have been planned for development for roughly three decades. Nearly thirty years ago, Clean Water Services installed high capacity sewer lines through the property in anticipation of growth. The streets that south and west of Sunset Ridge have been stubbed for a decade. The elementary school was built with capacity in anticipation of completion of the neighborhood around Sunset Ridge. We share your view that the prior extension was too large. However, expanding to the southeast makes sense for the city and has long been a part of this community's plans. These lands were intentionally left undesignated during the grand bargain with one thousand friends support so that North Plains could control this boundary to Jackson School Road and Highway Twenty Six, which offers a lucrative opportunity for the city to derive revenue from non-residents rather than increase water fees or property taxes. If you look at the city's transportation systems plan, you will see that the city has long planned for an extension of Pacific Street that would cross McCane Creek to Jackson School Road. This means that S D Cs are credible to that project, and development would pay to construct this long desired asset that would alleviate pressure on Glencoe Road. We would urge you to not throw the baby out backwater and instead proceed with consideration of a reasonable, smart twenty year urban growth boundary proceeding with confidence that this council will retain control over zoning, concept planning, and the pace and complexion of development. Our coalition looks forward to working with the city on what that plan would look like over twenty year horizon. Please continue the planning work that these families have participated in since twenty sixteen in good faith and at personal expense based on the city's expressly stated, stated desire to complete the city, enhance revenues and amenities without increasing taxes to homeowners, and take the lead in maintaining its southeast boundary as Hillsborough encroaches ever closer. Thank you again for your service, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. If you have any questions, I probably won't be able to answer them, but I'm happy to help with longer risks.
You know how many? Thank you. I was reading along and you did great. Um, I apologize that Chris ended up feeling like he needed to write that well thought out extensive email while he's so ill. I think that probably comes down to phrasing of our agenda item and, you know, any, as I mentioned, heartburn that that may have created. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with Chris. I hope he'll keep coming to meetings. Um, and as we discuss what a U G B will look like that's community informed um, and beneficial to North Plains, I absolutely encourage him to continue being part of that conversation. Um, for now, I hope he feels better and thank you for coming tonight.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
All right. And Rudy, I can never say your name properly. I'm so sorry. Can you help me out? Rudy Catla, let's go ahead and talk about the R A C.
Smoke this out or what?
Well, we were shivering earlier. Now it's a little warm. My apologies. Yeah. It's one of those, technology is not our friend tonight. The thermostat apparently isn't either. We'll get through it. Thanks, Rudy. How can we help?
Look into the new budget, get that fixed. Uh, Rudy Catla, uh, one eight three three five River Edge Lane, Lake of Sweet, Oregon. Uh, yes, Mayor Goodwin, City Council, uh, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted again just to review my background and have been involved with two of America's best master plan communities as named by the Urban Land Institute, Thousand Friends of Oregon, and the National Association Home Builders. They are based on premise of smart growth. And my question to this council is what is your definition of smart growth?
I don't know whether each of us might have different opinions on that and whether we feel like we wanna talk about that now, but I will just generally say that moving forward, we are going to be looking for community informed strategies and priorities.
I just wanna say respectfully, this is public comment, and so to have that discussion would be something we would need to put on an agenda, so the whole community could participate, including ourselves.
Sure. Well, it's, it's a concern. I think the RAC's intent was to look, take a, a long look at what would be the right thing for the community and would, would consider smart growth alternatives. So I would just encourage you to let that process continue out.
Very good one. Question. Uh, would there be an opportunity to add to our future agenda to receive and review a consolidated report that represents all of the good work that the ReLook Committee has done so far, including community insights?
I think that would be very informative as we continue this review process. Bill, is that something that we could add to a future agenda to partner with probably three J at that point? And review some of the output from the information gathering that they've been doing?
Um, Mayor, yes. So you, you have a few different ways you can do that. That would certainly be one where you have a work session with the consultant and staff perhaps to kind of go over. That would probably be a good way to get the consultant's perspective on what the scope of work was, what everything, and what's happened so far, what, how they approached everything and some of the findings. Um, I will note that in, on the January sixth meeting, um, you did get at least one request suggestion to have a joint work session with the advisory committee itself to kind of
Right.
hear from them. Um, you could do a combination, so any and all of that can be done.
Okay, I think the short answer is that yes, that's absolutely something that we intend to continue pursuing, um, reviewing the information that's been gathered and the community engagement that's happened so far. So I think absolutely, let's, let's continue down the path of finding a time on a future agenda to review that data and have a joint work session with the R A C.
Thank you, peer courtesy and consideration.
Butch, is this late enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't have any prepared, Mayor, but a little bit confused. If you could help me out.
Sure.
You ran on the, on the agenda of anti-growth or no growth. Is that kind of what you know?
Um, not quite. I think
We pointed what you, what your platform was.
So absolutely, there is an important distinction between no growth and smart growth. And to my knowledge, none of the Friends of North Plains Smart Growth candidates ever said that we don't wanna grow at all. That's gonna be a conversation which is ongoing and does not get decided by the people who are sitting up here alone. That is a community decision that we plan to continue getting further engagement, further feedback, further input from a wide variety of folks on both sides of this issue. Because frankly, there shouldn't be sides to this. There should just be the community that we all enjoy, whether we live here or not, and how we're going to move forward, providing services and tangible benefits to the people of North Plains. And that's a collaborative discussion. I don't think we've arrived at any decisions thus far. The good work that the R A C has done is definitely something that we can leverage as we continue to move forward. But I would hesitate to, to put a pin in what that is going to look like because I don't see that as an individual or even a council decision.
Okay, but that's that's positive in that respect. I mean, being on the city council for all those years, I felt we did nothing wrong in what we did. We, we did a lot of four years of hard work to get it to this point. And we didn't, our, this all was open for four years. And I feel, you know, a little bit okay. I, I see where the, the buffer comes and it's just, it hurts because I and it's sorry that we had to go through this
Yeah.
this whole mess. I mean, uh, I don't know all the legalities, but the, the city needs to grow in some respect. If it don't, it die, it'll die.
Absolutely, and I, I agree. This has been far more contentious than it needs to be. I think we've got opportunities to get new ways of engaging the community and making sure that we really are, you know, getting the right voices in the room. And if, if people can't physically attend or they can't join on Zoom, that they have other ways of providing their personal context and we're um, us being able to make a cohesive decision that benefits everyone. We cannot make everybody happy all the time. I can't promise that, you know, anybody's personal plan is going to be what comes to fruition. But I can commit to making sure that we make informed decisions that to the best of our abilities really do provide tangible benefit for the community.
Okay, and that's, you're not, you're making the decision tonight. That's all coming down the road.
No, that is the heartburn that just a few words on an agenda packet has caused for a lot of people, and my apologies for that.
It just looks bad in the context of so short, so. And I understand those things. Those things are are not all controllable, you know.
It's just not, and the limitations on, you know, as I kind of alluded to, the limitations on what we could put on the agenda for last Monday based on the transition, and we weren't sworn in yet, and there's, there's a whole process. I don't recommend, you know, trying to do anything right at a transition point.
Okay.
So we are taking a thoughtful, measured approach. We have some time sensitive items that need to be addressed in executive session based on a hearing that's happening next week. And that really is the crux of why we're all sitting here tonight on a Wednesday instead of holding our couches.
And I do have a another time I will read another, I guess, a book that I would like to read to you that's very positive to this group and everybody concerned, so I will do that at a later time.
I really appreciate you coming and providing your info.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Butch. I've got Aaron Nichols.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. My name is Aaron Nichols. I live at eleven thousand and eleven, Jackson Court, Rockville, Oregon, and seven one two four. Um, and I just wanted to test it briefly on behalf of myself and the group, and North Plains Smart Growth. Um, I just wanna touch briefly on what I think is on the, within your executive session earlier um, on the ongoing appeal of the court case that kept the referendum on the ballot. Um, everything is, there's not likely unanimity on the county, on the council about the outcome of the referendum or the exact way forward. But I do think that this case is an expensive distraction and a barrier to the discussion that's needed around the expanding, expanding um, or growing, the U G B or growing the city. Um, I want to outline three quick reasons why the city should drop the case and allow more graceful to end the legal chapter of the story. The first is fairly simple. Um, an appeal such as this should actually go before the courts will undoubtedly cost the city well over a hundred thousand dollars, and even if the city, that's a And even if the city, that's a, the city should prevail and, you know, place that if the city should lose. Um, and it could stretch on for, for multiple years. Uh, this may be worthwhile in some cases where the city has a good chance of winning or the issue at hand is actually relevant to the city's operations. But neither actually applied in, in this case. Um, that brings me to a second reason. Um, you win or lose, the city stands to gain nothing from this case. The case isn't about whether the U G B should go forward. It, it neither, uh, encourages the, the expansion nor denies it. Um, that's a matter for this council to decide. Um, and thankfully you'll be deciding it in concert with, with the rest of, with, with others who, who are affected by it. Um, uh, it's not even about the legality or constitutional U G B related referenda, um, as, as sometimes the city's lawyer claims. The original restraining order against the city and subsequent decision that agreed with my group on all points. Um, states the obvious that the city council does not have the right to direct an employee of the city or the county to remove an already qualified ballot referendum. That is what the case is about. Um, that is what we want. Um. This isn't really a point of law that makes a lot of difference to the city as you're not likely to, to be directing a, a future employee. To take something off the ballot that's already been qualified. Um, and it's also certainly not likely to be overturned by the Court of Appeals. Um, that's a, that's pretty, that's, that's a constitutional right. Um. Uh, I think lastly and most importantly, uh, this is a side issue and it only exists because of poorly good advice the city got. And believing it could remove such a valid measure. Um, and it's getting in the way of progress of the discussions of the real issue, how and why the city should grow and expand. So, um, I don't think we should be spending energy or money that would be much better spent engaging the citizens and looking at the many options North Plains has to grow in its future. Um, and I hope that regardless of how you feel about the city's future growth, you agree the city need not continue with the appeal. So we can get to the real business. Um, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the comments cards I have, but I am trying to make sure that people feel they have the flexibility. Does anyone want to raise a hand and promise that they will fill out a card for our court report, for our city report afterwards? I want to. Okay.
Is it possible to say?
Absolutely.
Or me to comment during this time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to, um, double check. I know, um, just tonight we received in our, our packet. Um, a letter from Counselor Page and I just wanted to know about something that could be read into the record. Um. That's my first question and then I have a follow up question after we receive an answer.
Sure. Um, if you feel like doing more reading, absolutely. I am done for the night. My throat sore. Go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so just before I read that, I just also just wanted to share, um. You know, I fully recognize. There's a lot of times some good things on the table and I would just share, um, you know, as a counselor, it was, it was pretty jarring to me. Um, to find out on Facebook that we were having a meeting. And I found that out before I even received an email and I, and I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus. Uh, but my ask is that going forward, we have clear communication and clear consensus. Um, you know, we're all working. We all have jobs, kids, childcare. Um, and it was, it was quite jarring to see a Facebook post telling me about a special session for city council. And I had received no prior communication. Bill had alluded to it in the Friday five that we received. But other than that, there was no other communication and no consensus. And that's the part that I really, um, just want to align this body of. Can we please have consensus before we're making these special sessions? Sorry. Um, I, I think everyone here that has come on such short notice. But even as a, you know, elected official being up here, this was, um, it, it felt. It, it didn't feel great. And, and I know, again, you know, no one's in trouble. I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus, but I just want to be really clear on. My hope going forward that we can have a consensus as a body of, of these special sessions and also make sure that the community. You know, feels involved as well. And I know that's the, the, the platform that everyone's trying to work on, but that would just be my ask.
No, I really appreciate you saying that. And that actually. Echoes some concerns that I had, um, about kind of the structure and the process for how we notify for meetings like this. I think it's absolutely an opportunity for us to refine that and take some of this feedback. Um. You know, we ran into some issues, again, not throwing anybody under the bus where some city staff had some pre-scheduled vacation. And I certainly never want to get in the way of someone going and having their personal time. I think that aggravated the situation, but that we absolutely do need to, there, there are going to be times. I hope not often and not soon, but there are going to be times when we need to call an emergency session. And we need a clear cut process for how to notify, I think, beyond email. Because my understanding after I asked some clarifying questions is that maybe an email was sent. Hopefully it was sent promptly before the Facebook, but I can't swear to that. Um, but I think even just me personally. Email is not always my best method of communication. And I think us putting some other structure in there and maybe brainstorming. I don't think that has to be in a city council meeting, but let's put together, um, a clear cut process. So that we know we're going to get that information as soon as possible and that we have a, a chance to react to that. I am so sorry if you had to arrange last minute childcare. I know what an incredibly difficult task that is. And I thank you for being here.
Thank you for letting me in. Um, you know, clear communication is vital. So I just hope going forward. Um, we have a, you know, more streamlined process and it makes it easier for everyone. So.
Hundred percent.
Um, so thank you for that. And just on that note, um, I did just want to include, um, Counselor Page, um, was, was pretty bummed that he wasn't able to be here tonight. And, um, I just wanted to read into the record, um. You know, what he put it in our packet. So, um, this was sent from Counselor Page, Wednesday, January fifteen, the six forty one P M. Please include this in the record for tonight's session. This is self-dealing. The only way to get these damages is to not have the decision. Planning this meeting on a day I cannot show up this low. I think it is corrupt to vote to pay yourselves as lead plaintiffs against the city and your friends that paid for your election. The decision to appeal is a matter of mathematics. It is cheaper to appeal than it is to pay the judgment. If the plaintiffs agree to not sue for triple damages, then I would support the not appeal. However, if we do appeal and lose, they get nothing. This smells. It is low and self-dealing. Let the appeal process play out and save the city over a hundred thousand. There is no magical reason to remove the appeal. Signed James Page.
Thank you.
May, uh, may, um, uh, this is the point of information and does not need to be answered now, but I would like to also request. Um, more information in particular, and if this is public. Privilege to the public, that would be highly desired, but I respect legal boundaries. I'd like to have a comprehensive report of the legal costs spent so far on the U G B matter today. And what is, what is pending as well.
Hmm. I think that's a very reasonable request. Um. Bill, is that something that you want to discuss with Chad or is that? Something that we can gather, I would assume for a future meeting, but you don't have that off the cuff.
Um, legals. Okay, so, um, that's information that is fairly easy to look up in. The accounting system, but I think off the cuff is not, um.
I wouldn't expect you to.
I guess the question would be over what time period? Because the process has been kind of going for a while. So are we talking one year? Are we talking kind of since this current process started, I would arguably say to. This phase of it around two thousand, I guess. You know, um, that would be my question. This biennium, I'm happy to look, I'm happy to report that it's. So it's all how you specify the search for the info.
Well, yeah, and I would maybe. Pitch back clarifying. When you're referring to the U G B, is that all of the structure and framework? But behind putting together the proposal, or are you talking about? Um, when it became more publicly contentious and there were. Legal cases regarding the ballot?
I would say both.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable for?
Oh, yeah.
Future section.
Absolutely. I mean, um, um, part of the answer, and I'll, I'll reconfirm and make sure, see how much more comprehensive the information needs to be. But on the record, on December sixteenth, um, for. Um. For both. Excuse me, for the contingency, for the resolution that authorized contingency allocation for different expenditures. That topic is treated greatly. Um, but off the top of my head, I can't say that is, that is fully comprehensive, but some of that is out there. So that's what I'll start with. And then anything that I see missing based on, uh, you know, the query you'd like. I can kind of, I can add to that and bring that back to you all for, um, happily for certain.
Okay, I appreciate that. And just again, for clarification, because. We're all learning here. Is that something that we would then review in a future session and discuss? Or as purely information, is that something we're going to expect in email?
Um, well, I mean, I can share that with you all, you know, be an email. If you want to make, if you want to follow up with a conversation. Um, as an agenda item and kind of discuss aspects of it, you know, we can, we can do that too. It's really just how you want to, it's how. How you want to take the information and, and, you know, and, and. Put on agenda or not.
Yeah, I think I'm open to other opinions, but I would say the first step is us getting that information and then determining whether we need it on a future agenda.
Hmm, sure.
Did you have a comment?
I have, I have. So, uh, we received four documents. And, um, for public record. Had email before the meeting was coming in. And so one of that, we read three of them into this meeting. And I, I know we said we didn't get any work to be written, but we have read three of the four. And so, um, and I don't know where, who submitted the fourth one. Um, or if that goes to another one, it is the con, it starts off, this is the contract between the Friends of North Plains Smart Growth.
Yeah.
Um. So thinking that we should probably go ahead and read. That into the meeting as well.
I mean, my guess, like I said, my throat's sore, but if you want to go for it, I encourage you.
And I also, um, I also want to, um, sort of piggyback on the, on Counselor Page's remarks in terms of the special meeting. Because I'm not seeing anything at this moment that could have been or on the agenda that could not have been done in a regular session meeting. Even though we would have to go into executive session ahead of time. And I realize there's things that they're pending on the twenty second or beyond. However, the meeting's on the twenty first. And so, um, it does make it very difficult, you know. To scramble to get it all out of there, make sure you get the twenty four hour notice, which doesn't give people a lot of time. So thank you for being here. Because, um, I know that is a challenge at the last minute to move those things around. Uh, but I think that, um, really coming to consensus about when we can do those meetings. As well as really trying to stick with our scheduled meetings to make that available to the public. Instead, we wanted it to be, you know, a, a chance for people to weigh in and to engage. And that is one of the best ways they can do it, knowing that it's happening on their calendar on a regular basis. So, um, I'll go ahead and read this document. So again, we have four and three were written. Yes.
Trying to track one of the, the comments that you had made about the, the timeline of the meeting just before you start reading this. Um, to address that. Yes, you're correct, that we are meeting, um, on the twenty first. There is a deadline of nine A M on the twenty second. For something that we need to determine in our executive session that will be happening soon. We can talk about that further, but that's cutting it a little too close.
It's still the day before and it could have been decided and reported at one.
Yeah.
So, um, my perspective. Okay, so, uh, I read in the separate document. This is the contract between Friends of North Plains Smart Growth, F N P S G. And Katie Redding entered into on this blank day of March twenty twenty four. The contract is regarding their joint litigation to keep refer, referendums thirty four dash three two seven on the May twenty twenty four ballot. Excuse me if I kind of go along, get stuck along here this first time, um, we are ready to move. And ensure that the results is certified and declared legal. This contract also includes any litigation that might arise from the initial cases described above, including but not limited to appeals. By either the plaintiff or the defendant and retaliatory action taken against Ms. Redding by defendants or other interested parties in this litigation. F N P S G acknowledges Ms. Redding's special role and importance to the case. As chief petitioner for the referendum, she is best positioned to be the lead plaintiff. F N P S G also acknowledges the risk Ms. Redding takes in this role. And the significant social benefits to North Plains, her neighbors in the county and the state of Oregon that she is providing by being the lead plaintiff in this case. By bringing this case, Ms. Redding also provides a significant service to F N F P S G. Considering this, F N P S G agrees to indemnify and cover Ms. Redding's legal expenses in the initial case. Or cases to keep the referendum on the ballot. Any appeal and any litigation that may arise from the initial cases described above, including but not limited to appeals by either the plaintiffs. Or the defendants and retaliatory action taken against this ready by defendants or other interested parties in this litigation. It is F X. Even S G's intention to pay for all legal costs of all plaintiffs. But considering Katie Redding's special role in the litigation, F N P S G will engage in this additional binding contract. To ensure that Ms. Redding's expenses are covered for any other plaintiff or party to the case to the fullest extent of the law. If any part of this contract is found to be unlawful, Friends of North Plains Smart Growth here makes it clear that F N P S G intends to cover Katie Redding's. Legal expenses related to their joint lawsuit and the subsequent lawsuits regarding the referendum thirty four dash three two seven. That may develop in the process and it intends to be bound by this agreement. And then there's two signature lines, one for Aaron Nichols. For Friends of North Plains Smart Growth and one for Katie Redding. Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else? Have. Then I think we move on to. Our next item of unfinished business. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here.
And the comment, so unfinished business.
All right. So our first item here is the Urban Growth Boundary Referendum Decision Appeal Discussion. And I believe that will lead us into some executive session. So I'm open to suggestions on how. If at all, we want to structure some more public discussion before we close this again. For the public.
Um. So. I, I. Ma'am, I guess what I would say is, um. We, we do have at least one counselor that is, um, not. Um, you know, up to speed on, on this generally. So, um. That some sort of discussion might be a good idea, or I believe, um, Counselor McCall Wallace might have some questions. I'm just thinking of her because I think you're, I think you're the only one that, that probably has the least familiarity. And so, um, questions or discussion about that for familiarity might be a good idea. Um, I think if there's going to be a, a, this, this body is going to reach a decision about the appeal, what it does with it or aspects of it. Um, you might want to kind of declare, you know, that we want to, we'll, we'll be deliberating that tonight before, after executive session. Um. But anyway, it's kind of just a broadly labeled topic. And so I just kind of want to make sure that, um, you know, that, um. As the aspects of it that need to be discussed are is all.
All right, um, I'm going to try not to step on anything that should be in executive session. But my understanding is that we have some decisions to make that are financial in nature. Based on something sent by opposing counsel. Is that accurate?
Yeah, there, um. Chad, you have your, you have your mic open. So if you would like to, um, step in and kind of frame how we should be thinking about this, feel free.
Yeah, I, I want to give the council and, and the public an update. In that the, the deadline that we've been talking about was based on the, uh, court hearing on the twenty fourth. It was originally scheduled for the twenty fourth. Due to the, uh, uh, family emergency issues that Chris was experiencing. Uh, they filed a motion with the court today, a joint motion with, um, the plaintiff's counsel to extend that hearing date. And they requested either February eighteenth or nineteenth or potentially, I believe, March tenth. And so it looks like, you know, based on the party's request, it's, it's not guaranteed. But, um, the court, when there's a joint motion like this, will most likely grant an extension, especially given the circumstances that are involved here. So, um, you know, I just want to make sure you have that information as you're contemplating everything tonight. That just got filed this afternoon, so I apologize that I wasn't able to get that to you earlier today. Um. And so that, that's one thing I just want to make sure that you're aware of. As far as, uh, structuring the conversation tonight. Uh, you certainly have options to have some public discussion about whether or not you want to move forward with the litigation. You know, direct, um, city staff in our office to, you know, drop that discussion. Or go into executive session to talk about, you know, sort of the legal issues associated with all of that. Um, and then likewise with the, the fee petition. And they are somewhat intertwined. And so if you feel like you want to have that intertwined discussion and, and get some legal advice in executive session first and then come out and have a broader discussion, that's certainly an option. Um, but of course, at the same time, there's nothing that precludes someone from making a motion right now and you all debating and voting on that motion. So it's really sort of up to you all how you want to proceed. Um, you know, I will say that to the extent that you want legal advice. It's better to take that legal advice in executive session. I'm sort of limited in what I'm, what I can say publicly, you know, without the full council, you know, voting on waiving attorney client privilege. So, um, you know, that would sort of be my advice, that if you want some legal advice, go into executive session, get that legal. So, um, you know, that would sort of be my advice, that if you want some legal advice, go into executive session, get that legal advice and then come out and have a discussion.
Yeah, I think what we're going to need to inform any discussion. Is to understand, um, a bit more about what our options are and the costs associated with those options. So if you feel like that is an executive session conversation, I think that, that probably sends us down that path. And Michelle, interest, I do see. Chad, would you, would you agree that if we need to talk about? Um, the items I mentioned that does require executive session?
Yeah, I think it, it's best to go into an executive session and then, you know, to the extent that you receive legal advice and you want to, you know, come out and waive any privilege. And, and have some of that information shared with the public, the council as a body can decide to do that. To the extent that you don't want to weigh that privilege, but just have a, a discussion, not about the legal advice, but about sort of the, the public policy issues behind these decisions. You could do that in the public setting, but you know, to the extent that you want some legal advice to help inform that discussion, I would suggest that you do that first.
Let's see where we get and if we need to. Adjust. Michelle, you were first.
Um, I, yeah, and I thank you for bringing up that I'm kind of a new one here, uh, in terms of this issue. And, uh, you know, I have heard the deal, have read a little bit of the paper, that kind of thing. Um, and so yes, I do feel like that as a. Uh, city counselor, I am not prepared to make decisions without more information. And so, um, and I think that does. Uh, warrant closed session information. Um, it's the first I've heard of litigation, really, and sort of what that litigation is, um, in terms of. Just information that was received today. So, um, I feel like there needs to be more updating. I know that on January sixth, at the other, or yeah, the last meeting, we were asked to send in agenda items. Um, for sort of workshop, like what should we have information on? And one thing I did list was all the plans because. You know, any kind of decisions also ties to those plans and understanding, but also the U G, or U G. Uh, so, um. You know, I feel like that it, it makes sense to go into executive session to get the counselors up to speed in terms of basic information. Be able to ask questions, some certainly are somewhat with financial, and then open that discussion of. Rather than having a discussion being led without needing for foundation of information.
I would agree and clarify whether that procedure would allow us to continue with a decision tonight. Given the time-sensitive nature.
Yes, as long as you announce that you would, will plan to come out of executive session and potentially make a decisions to notify the public. Then you could certainly come back and have that public discussion and make a decision if you wanted to.
And I will apologize to everyone in this room who has to go back out in the cold again. It is January and that is not ideal.
Yeah, and this, this is a question for Chad. Hi Chad, this is Counselor Payton. I just wanted to. Clarify, did I understand correctly that the deadline, there was a motion filed this afternoon to extend that deadline to. February eighteen through March ten?
Yeah, so the, the deadline is related to a settlement offer from the plaintiff's counsel that we received yesterday. And they, they requested a deadline of the twenty-second, which would be in advance of the hearing on the twenty-fourth. Um, given that the hearing itself is going to be postponed until February. I would presume that the offer would still stand for plaintiff's counsel, you know, to extend that as well. I have not received confirmation from them on that. So if you want to be completely legally safe, you'd want to respond by the twenty-second. Um, but you know, I, I can't imagine that, that plaintiff's counsel would be, um, unreasonable since the. The original deadline was linked to the hearing date, that I feel like they would most likely link the offer, the settlement offer to the hearing date as well. I can't confirm that specificity though. So again, the legally safest course, if you, if you're really concerned about that, don't think they'll extend the deadline. Would be to make a decision before the twenty-second.
Okay. Thank you. And I, the reason why I'm asking, um, you know, I think just given the, the abrupt nature of tonight's meeting. Um, you know, we're missing, we're missing a counselor here. Um, we have an executive session to go through and get some background for some of our newer counselors. And our city attorney, Chris Cream, who's been actively involved in this, um, litigation is not here tonight. And I would really like to be represented. Uh, with all due respect by Chris Cream, who has a, a really firm foundation, um, you know, on, on the steps leading up to this. And I would, um, you know, just ask that, do we need to, um, come to a decision tonight or can we? Add an executive session to. You know, the January twenty-first meeting, um, knowing that, you know, we do have to respond by the next day. Um, but there also is a potential for that, um, deadline to an extent, potentially, we don't know, but at least we can still have a day. Um, so I'll leave it up for discussion here, but I just, I would really like to be represented by Chris Cream.
First of all, no offense taken whatsoever. Um, and you know, certainly if you all wanted to, uh. Postpone this discussion until the twenty-first. Um, and I can reach out to plaintiff's counsel tomorrow to see if they're willing to extend that deadline to whatever, you know, forty-eight hours before whatever. Court date the, the court actually sets for the hearing. I'm happy to do that. And so you can have an informed decision about whether you need to have this discussion on the twenty-first. Or if you want to postpone it till later, you know, in February, you know, closer to the actual hearing date. But, you know, again, that's, that's a call for the council as a body to make and sort of whatever the majority wants to do is, is certainly fine with me.
Chad, do we have, um, and again, respecting that Chris is dealing with a important personal situation. Do we have any? Idea of what his availability is going to be next week if we did wait until Monday, that we would have. Confidence that he's going to be able to attend?
I unfortunately do not know for certain. Um, things are a little bit fluffsy, it's flying out, you know, today and, you know, we'll be back in the Midwest. Um, and then, you know, arrangements need to be made and I don't know what faith those arrangements will be made for. So, um, depending on that.
I would respect that it was not in all, at all meant to be pushed. Before he's ready.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think that makes sense, but that then leaves us just as a discussion between us here. That we have two unknowns. We are not certain that plaintiff's counsel will extend the offer that has been provided. And we are not certain that Chris will be available on Monday to continue that discussion. With that in mind, I, I think we have to, in my opinion, stick with the purpose of this executive session. Tonight and this special meeting. So that we don't miss our opportunity to come to a thoughtful decision there.
If, if we just move it to the twenty-first, it doesn't change that opportunity. And it may actually mean that we have until February, uh, which would allow hopefully all the counselors to be involved, um, through three or four. Council meeting, um. So I feel like it doesn't, to postpone it and change it to the twenty-first, doesn't, um, change anything. No, we can still meet the deadline. We, those things, we may have an opportunity to move it to February, you know, if we needed more time, you know, to discuss it. But, um, a decision could be made at the twenty-first, um, in terms of a response in the executive session.
Okay, I think that is probably okay, but again, with those two. With those two variables in place, I think, um. You know, we have to. At least have come to a, a preliminary decision in case that is not extended. Yeah.
Um, point of order, Lori, have you received any communication from Counselor Fage that he would not be in attendance for the regularly scheduled? January twenty-first meeting?
No, um, he is usually good on earlier days of the week.
Hmm.
Um, it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that he normally has conflicts. So I can. I can try and text him right now and see if I can get a response to see that he's, but I have not heard from him saying he's not available. So.
I wouldn't be concerned about his availability. It's more that we have counsel tonight. And there's nothing to indicate that we would have different counsel on Monday.
Yeah, I, I would politely disagree. Um, you know, Counselor Fage, not only an email he sent in this record, but also an email. Um, friend, you know, notifying us for tonight's meeting. He, you know, expressed his interest in wanting to be able to attend. Um, and, you know.
Sorry, different spellings of counsel. I mean, we have legal counsel.
Absolutely. Um, but also just, you know, again, I think the platform, again, we're all here is to hear from everyone. And I don't want to dismiss Counselor Fage being able to attend when there is a Plan B and maybe Plan C and Plan D. Um, in place. And I, I've also expressed my interest in city attorney Chris Cream representing us. And yes, we don't have a crystal ball. Who knows? You know, if Chris Cream will be available, um, but there's also no harm in waiting to see if Chris Cream is available and also knowing that. Counselor Fage would be able to most likely attend, uh, next Tuesdays.
A bit of information that you may or may not be aware of in terms of. The issue of extension probability. Um, the, the opposing counsel on this issue, um, has in the past. Um, asked us in good faith to extend the deadline on this issue because of an allergy appointment of. The attorney on the other side and we granted that. So, um, we do have that bit of. If we want an extension, that might make it more likely that it could happen. So in the interest of anybody worried about time on it. That did happen in the past and we granted them the extension.
Okay. Um. I want to make the best use of time for everyone who has come tonight and, um.
This is a new counsel. I, I do think, while I, I appreciate and understand your guys' sentiments here, um, appreciate your feedback. Um, I do think it's healthy to have, um, new legal, you know, opinions. So I'm not afraid to continue the conversation tonight.
Hmm.
Um, and see where we go. And I, I empathize with James being absent tonight. Um. You know, uh, it's hard to juggle schedules and, and be aware all the time, especially when you have family, you're working, et cetera. Um, this is, this is, we're not doing, we're doing this work for free, right? And so I, I do encourage that we continue the conversation since we have critical mass. This is a, a question for Chad. Hi Chad, this is Counselor Payton again. Um, I just wanted to just, um. Get kind of a high level overview of, um, you know, your intention tonight. Are you here for, um. You know, painting the entire picture to counsel and. From start to finish the litigation, or you really here as counsel and to be a sounding board and, you know, read off notes essentially?
Uh, so certainly not read off notes. Um, I'm here to provide legal advice to the city on the litigation. Whether that is the full sort of scope of, you know, here's how we got here and here's what all the court said. And here's the issues that are, you know, potentially ripe for appeal. Or is it just related to the settlement offer and attorney's fees? That's really up to the council as a body as to sort of what decisions you want to make and, and where you want to go. I'm prepared to talk about all of it if you want. I've consulted with Chris and, and, you know, our office is a pretty small office, so we, we talk to each other a lot. So I'm familiar with this case. Um, so I'm prepared to talk about whatever you want to talk about. It's just a matter of sort of what the council as a body decides that you all want to do and have a discussion about.
Thank you. And I think, um, you know, I don't see a harm in necessarily having an executive session and, and kind of giving a high level overview to counsel currently. Um, but again, I think there's a lot of value to including Counselor Fage in that discussion. Um, because again, we're going to have to go through this process again, right? And he could be potentially, um, a voting member on something and he doesn't have the full scope. So. Um, I again will just express that I would like to postpone, um. I would like to postpone, you know, our executive session until the Tuesday, January twenty-first meeting. Um, again, give Counselor Fage an opportunity because right now it feels, um, very dismissive. Of, of him not being able to be included in, in something that we do have. Um, so I will, I will just throw that out there, um, and I, I'll defer to Counselor McCall Wallace, sorry. So you're.
Oh, no, it's, it's, I don't know whether to leave him up or, you know, maybe we should have a little late or something. Um, so, um. Mayor, uh, if I heard you correctly, you know, one is you're also want to be respectful of everybody in the audience's time here tonight. So, um, and I don't know if this will work or not. This is just a proposed thought or idea, but you know, we could. This, this is an agenda item. And before we go into executive session, we could take the public comment for this agenda item. You know, and then later, you know, postpone the executive session and go into that. Uh, I think so if there was more that need, that people were waiting to be fed into participate in, and it sounds like that was part of the concern. Um, so then still provides the opportunity for, um, Counselor Fage to participate, um, potentially. Our, um, city attorney to be there at night, though I think Chad would handle it well as well. Um, and, and allow, um, all of us as counselors. So I know everybody has a piece that they have done and. There's only two council members that have heard and been part of all of the city process of it. And so I think it's, it's not just me that's on that learning curve, but it's all of us. And, and it gives us an opportunity to dive in a bit deeper. Uh, so I don't know what the rush is. If we, you know, other than, you know, that response. But it would give us a chance to dive in deeper on the issue and sort of to hear all of those pieces.
Hmm. And I'll just weigh in on this as well, that I was extremely favorably impressed by my interaction with Chad to date. And his confidence, um, and familiarity with the case. I would personally like to, um, continue the executive session and let Chad weigh in on these topics because. Candidly, there has been some disagreement about some of Chris's opinions on this. And I think getting a, a second. Um, set of opinions from a different lawyer who is also familiar with the case has some real benefit for us as well. So I would prefer that we continue with the executive session and leave ourselves the room to come back. Um, to the public and make a decision if that turned out to be necessary once we are better.
Uh, I would just say, um, and ask, you know. Chad, I, I appreciate just, you know, be, you being here tonight, um, and kind of this, this tennis back and forth of discussion. Uh, and you know, to Mayor Goodwin's point, um, you know, sometimes having a second set of eyes can be so beneficial. Is that something that we could have, um, potentially Attorney, City Attorney Chris Cream and Chad at the next session? And I understand a fiscal standpoint as well, but, um, just to, you know, compromise both, both opinions.
As well as Chris's personal schedule.
Can I ask a question? Um, I, I, I appreciate Chad giving us, um, his, you know, his, his opinion, but I guess. My concern would be what Chad advises being different from what Chris advises. Um, that becomes an issue. We get two different opinions from the same city attorney firm. Um, anyway, I just, I'd be concerned about that.
Well, do, let me ask the question differently. Do we have any doubt as to what Chris's advice would be? It sounds like that is perceived with the appeal.
Um, well, I don't know what is it. I mean, I don't know what he would mean. I, I wouldn't be able to speak for him, but I mean, I'm, I'm just speaking.
What his advice has been thus far?
Um. On the topic of the appeal, without getting too much into the executive session, I, 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 I would not characterize any, any advice of his to be. Assertive in any way. I think he's just characterized the situation. Um, and in executive session, counsel asked questions and. Um, kind of gave opinion about what they, you know, kind of what they thought. Um, but again, I, I just want to, so I don't know what kind of advice he would give tonight. I just. I, I don't want to see us go down the path of getting two different opinions on something. That's all, that's all.
That's a fair statement. Okay, um. I think at this point, my preference is for us to continue with the executive session. We've teed up. And learn some more about what is going on. I think that's important for those of us who are new, um, whether elected or appointed. So what do we need to do to move forward with our executive session?
You could ask the public comment.
On this particular part?
Sure.
Before we close the meeting, absolutely.
That, so they all have to leave.
Well, no. Yeah, so let's make sure that we maybe pause that a moment. Just procedurally and make sure that we accept the public comment.
Um, so am I understanding correctly that we're dismissing the, um, public record and, and. Outcry from Counselor Fage that he would like to be part of this process?
To get more information in a timely manner, unfortunately, yes.
Uh, but knowing that we don't have, we're not up against a, a hard deadline, right? So we have a, we have a planned city council meeting.
Yeah.
On Tuesday, the twenty-first. That Counselor Fage is, is a, planning on attending, you know, as of right now. Um, I just, you know, again, I, I mean this with all due respect.
Completely. I am so encouraged that you feel comfortable disagreeing and us having a, a better conversation about it.
Um, but I, I really have to thank for Counselor Fage because. Um, you know, if I weren't here, right, I would want someone to do the same for me and just like anyone else here. um, you know, if I weren't here, right, I would want someone to do the same for me and just like anyone else here, right? Um and it just feels very dismissive um that we are just plowing forward with an executive session that Counselor Page, you know, potentially down the line could also need to be part of, and he doesn't have that background, and we have the option without, you know, putting anyone out to be able to say, yep, we'll come back into executive session, and we'll capture public comment now. And that way allows Counselor Page into that session. He gets the background, he gets a seat at the table. Chris Cream gets a seat at the table, you know, maybe Chad as well, but Chris Cream has been, has has been part of this process. And for me, um and this is kind of a poor analogy, but for me, it's like you know, a doctor diagnosing you with cancer, and they're like, yep, I think you have cancer. I think it's, you know, blah, blah, blah. And you're like, okay, cut me open, doc. You said you know where it's at. And then the day of your surgery, it's a different doctor cutting you open. You're like, well, I hope you know where it's at. I hope you're going down the right path, right? Um so for me, I really would, again, just reiterate, I would like to postpone this, and I guess I would just like to hear um maybe why we couldn't include Counselor Page, why we can't, you know, take into my my um perspective as well.
So you sound like you have something to say.
I do want to make a comment. Um whether we decide to attend as a council and show up, that's been a theme that I've been hearing a lot. It it's a self-choice. We have a counselor on the phone who called in remotely. He ma- made the decision to show up. I I empathize with his absence, but we have people here in the room, workplace and positions. I, my recommendation is proceed.
Counselor Dunbar?
So um based on the new information that um that, I apologize, um uh Chad provided and based on the um the feedback from Bill, um and because uh if I see correctly, I believe that the uh attorney is on the phone, the the opposing counsel is on the phone, I I think um it's reasonable to ask if he's willing to uh, you know, extend the the timeline based on the joint motion. Is that an option?
I like that creative solution potentially. Are we able to unmute opposing counsel so that we could have to ask a question? Or is that not technologically possible?
No, we can um, we can unmute him ever. We just keep him muted so that there's no props or weird.
Understood.
Um he is uh, he's actually unmuted right now.
Okay. Jesse, I am hopeful that you can hear us and that you are able to perhaps answer Counselor Dunbar's question.
Good evening, Mayor Goodwin and counselors. Yes, I've I've been able to hear you the the whole meeting. I've been listening in, so thanks for allowing me the chance to to speak. So first of all, uh on this issue of an extension, we've already agreed, plaintiffs have al- already agreed and agreed immediately to postpone the hearing after your attorney uh explained the situation that he's dealing with with his family, and that's not a problem. The, it's a separate issue when it comes to the settlement offer, which expires early next week. Um, you know, it's a professional courtesy that we extend to attorneys even on the other side when it comes to rescheduling hearings for personal reasons. Um but that that itself comes with a cost. The plaintiffs here, I I've, I have to retool my own schedule, do a bunch of work and uh incur costs because of it. So I also have multiple clients to talk to. And I don't have authority to extend any settlement offer as I sit here because I'm, I just don't have the ability to talk with them um in that way at the, at this time. But that said, I would not recommend extending that particular settlement offer any further, um simply because costs are going to continue for plaintiffs. Uh it it's not that costs are frozen for the next five or six weeks, or whenever the hearing ends up happening. Those will continue to be incurred. Um so I'm going to have to respectfully decline uh at this time to extend this the settlement offer deadline, and um I don't do that callously. It's just I don't have the authority. Um and frankly, the more time goes on, the more it's going to cost plaintiffs without an answer to that question. So happy to answer any clarifying questions or address any other issues if you'd like.
Thank you so much for that feedback. I I understand that this is an awkward position to put you in. Um and that that's not a decision that you can make unilaterally. So with that information in place, I think we really do need to look at this as a time-sensitive issue as it was originally and address the opportunity of negotiating our costs down while it remains available. Yes, Michelle?
Um I have a question for the, to the attorney, um Counselor Michelle Nicole Wallace. Um so if this were to get moved to the executive session before the January twenty first regular session meeting, which then, you know, allows more public notification, etc., also allows Counselor um Page to participate. Uh and a decision was made that we came out of executive session with, if if that were the case, um before ten P M. Could a message, could an answer be given by nine A M to meet the deadline?
Yes, of course.
So there's not a problem with the timeline settling? In terms of its time sensitivity?
Certainly doesn't give us any doesn't give us any chance if for some reason Chris is not available, that point potentially.
Chad would be there if it wasn't available. We could have a city attorney there.
Then I, I'm sorry. I I really don't see why we can't proceed with at least part of this conversation tonight, and I think we should make good use of our time, including our eight city attorney who's available for us today.
Mayor, if I could maybe make a a suggestion. Um it it does not seem like you're going to be able to reach consensus tonight, and so, you know, typically a a good way to resolve these issues is to have someone make a motion. And then if that motion passes, then you can, you decide what the majority of the council wants to do. So if someone wants to make a motion to you know, postpone the executive session until the twenty first, that can happen. If someone wants to make a motion to go into executive session tonight, that can happen. But I, you know, certainly I don't mean to cut off your debate, but I just want to give you all the tools, since everyone's relatively new, new about how to maybe proceed here, uh if if you don't think you're going to be able to reach a consensus.
I very much appreciate that. Consensus is always the goal because I don't want anyone to feel like they're being done to rather than participating in a collaborative situation, but I think at this point, we probably do need to make a decision. Did I see it here?
I'll make a motion to postpone the executive session to the January twenty first meeting so that we can include Counselor Page. Nicole Wallace, I'll second.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote. Michelle?
We're just gonna vote and like say all those
All those in favor saying?
Okay, we went through this last time, and it was a lot clearer if we went down the line. So that's what I'm
Anybody want to start, Aaron?
Sure, you are furthest to the right because you're on screen. Counselor Dunbar?
I'm sorry, so the motion is to postpone or to?
Postpone.
And can we have a discussion about it? Is that the other part?
Uh well, further discussion than we've already been having?
Yeah, sorry, and I apologize, Counselor Dunbar. Um but I think um just my my last part here, um you know, is, again, I think we're all trying to do the right thing and would the best we can with what we have. But I would um, you know, really just implore on this council to think about the platform that everyone has just run on and wanting to get that community consensus and wanting to get community feedback. And if we do not postpone this meeting to the twenty first, what kind of messaging are you sending to Counselor Page? What kind of messaging are we sending to the community that you're going to be dismissive of, you know, another counselor if we are not willing to postpone it, knowing that we do not have we do not have a risk if we wait. Yes, it might incur the city more costs. That part is unclear. Um but right now, we don't have all the tools we need to be able to make a clear picture, and that includes both council and counselors, including Counselor Page.
Agreed, and that is absolutely a priority for me as well. However, I think in this case, we have some pretty clearly stated opinions, including an opportunity for compromise from Counselor Page. So that to me is enough information for us to proceed.
I'm sorry, um.
Discussion on the motion. So um I too am in favor of postponing it. I feel like there's nothing to be gained by doing it tonight versus doing it on the twenty first. However, by doing it on the twenty first, we gain the voice of, a larger voice of the community, the entire council, and the ability to still follow within the timeline.
I have a point of information. Mayor Goodwin, you said that there was an opportunity to, I'm sorry, can you stated something about an opportunity to get uh something from Counselor Page? I missed that part.
Yes, so since you are not here physically, I'm not sure. I hope that someone has emailed you the packet that we received um physically here and that um Trista read into the record, and you might have heard um the email saying hated tonight.
Yes, I received that.
And that included both his opinion on um the situation overall, as well as his map that he would support um a particular option in the deal negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
And I think just to add into that, um you know, the email that Counselor Page sent out tonight, um because he was unable to attend, and I quote from Counselor Page, "Planning this meeting on a day I cannot show up is low," end quote. So with that, um you know, again, advocating for Counselor Page, advocating for inclusivity. It is very clearly stating from a two hours ago that Counselor Page is against not being included in the meeting. Um and so I think it's, it's a show of good faith and goodwill that we do include him in the next meeting and allow that, um knowing that there's, there's a possibility.
And I think all of us do our very best to show up when we can, but it is of course challenging. But at some point, we have to be able to operate as a body if not all of us are here. That situation is going to come up over and over again, and I think we have the benefit in this case of some clearly stated opinions by our representative who was unable to be here tonight. And based on the discussion that we've had with both sides of council, I I think this was not ideal. It gives us, as we said, those opportunities to figure out better ways to notice. Unfortunately, we arrived at Wednesday, not because of the city, not because of council, but because of attorney availability, um which obviously had its own special circumstances associated with it. But this is just where we landed. Counselor Dunbar?
So um I'm actually going to uh make a statement um in favor of the motion. Um so reading Counselor Page's email, he makes some statements in there that I believe need to be debated. Um unfortunately, while I am in support of getting more information from the attorney, uh he also has made put some things in that I think that we need to discuss as a council, so um I think that it is, unfortunately, while I would rather move forward today, I think that it I need to ask him more questions to understand before we, before I can make a uh a fair and equitable vote on anything. So I'm gonna, I'm going to say that I think that we need to carefully consider uh postponing at this point.
I would just add on to um that, you know, I think that the circumstances would be different if this was a regularly scheduled meeting. Um but again, um the fact that this meeting didn't actually have to happen tonight um for anything time sensitive feels kind of like a waste of my time, everyone else's time, right? Because now we know that this could have been done on January twenty first, um and still met the criteria for the deadline on January twenty second. Um so I think, you know, yes, to everyone's point, we all have jobs and, you know, there, if if we are going to continue on this path of you know, holding special sessions at the last minute, um there's a good possibility that even for myself, I wouldn't be able to attend due to my work schedule. And I don't want to hold it against Counselor Page for not being able to attend a special session that was literally posted twenty-four hours and eleven minutes before the meeting. Um so I would like to be able to have them attend the next meeting um as scheduled, and if he, for whatever reason, is not able to attend Monday, the twenty first, then yes, as a body, let's make that consensus. But I think that is the part, um I would really like this, this council to move forward as a consensus, right, and not um dismissing others' ideas. And because that's how it's feeling right now.
Not, not at all the intention, and I think this meeting was scheduled based on the information that was available at the time. Um, we were told this afternoon that the hearing might be rescheduled. So obviously, that was not available information when we would have needed to notice this public meeting. I think it was perfectly appropriate for us to have called it. I think we've already highlighted that there is definitely an opportunity for smoother process and better notifications through more than this email. I think at this point, we have talked it up, down, and sideways. We've heard from both councils. Um, you know, at at this point, if we, if we are not choosing to hold an executive session, I think I would at the very least like to um request, Chad, I I know that you've already cleared your schedule for us for Monday, but that regardless of Chris's availability, that we have you as well, um since I know a second opinion is going to be beneficial.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, there's a motion on the table. It needs to be voted on.
Real quick, Mayor, just one more point of clarification. Uh and certainly, I think this is all part of the discussion on the motion, so you can, you can certainly have this as part of your debate if if you're saying that a part of your decision is influenced by who may or may not be available to attend that evening. So I just want to clarify that the twenty first is a Tuesday, not a Monday. Monday's the twentieth, and so um you've you've said Monday and the twenty first, so I just want to clarify dates as far as what you, what you all are talking about, so the public's all on the same page, as as am I. So is the meeting the twelfth or the twentieth, I guess, is my question.
So yes, the meeting is on the twenty first of the month, because the twentieth this um year is a holiday. So we were talking about scheduling for Tuesday, the twenty first.
I will do my best to be there. Uh as some of you may know, I'm the regular city attorney for the city of Hillsborough, and that is their regular meeting night. I do not know whether or not they need me there that evening or not. If if so, I can see if someone else can cover that meeting for me so I can be at your meeting. Um but, you know, I just want to make sure that you're aware that that is an issue, and certainly if if I can't be here, you know, there's other attorneys in our office who who do the same sort of litigation who can attend. But likewise, there's attorneys who can come for me in Hillsborough if they need me. So, you know, we'll work it out one way or the other, but I just want to make sure that everyone's got all the information as you make your decisions.
Well, let's go ahead and address the motion on the table, and we'll go from there. So Counselor Dunbar, I think we are letting you speak first regarding whether or not we go into executive session tonight.
Sorry, can you restate the motion? The motion is to is to postpone, so I vote uh I to postpone.
And at this point, I am not voting because it's not a tie. So
Point of order, Madam Mayor, you vote, and the only one you don't vote on is if it's a uh replacement of a council member.
Then I vote no.
Four yeses and two noes basically. The extension is an automatic.
Yes.
It's it it goes with the majority, and so.
There's no discussion on the vote?
There's council discussion. Which would, which happened.
So at that point, looks like we're not kicking about. So I'm glad at least for that, that uh we're able to continue our discussion. At this point, counsel, is there any um further information that we can receive regarding this appeal and the financial opportunities we have while in public session, or should we go ahead and move on to item eight B?
If you have If you have an idea of information that you're looking for, I could certainly, you know, advise you as to whether or not that should be something discussed now. Or wait till executive session. Um my assumption is most of the discussion you'll want to have after executive session. Um but I, of course, defer to you all. If if you want to, you know, propose some things, I'm happy to respond to that. Or if you just want to move on because it's been a couple hours and and move to the rest of your agenda, that is hundred percent fine as well.
Also, can I just clarify whether we still with notices required, have the opportunity to add that executive session? On Monday, since I believe our agenda for that.
Thursday afternoon, it hasn't been completed yet, so we have time to put it on the agenda.
Okay, let's go ahead and make sure that that item is added. That we have requested um both Chris and Chad to attend if possible. And that we have appropriately noticed all of our counselors, and hopefully we will have a full set of votes. All right, so unless we have anything else that we would like to discuss on item eight A. I think we're going to move on to eight B, which is the urban ground, urban growth boundary relook discussion. Reason why we couldn't go forward? Anything else anybody wants to say? All right, so let's talk about the relook, um which. At this point, I think we're we're sort of at a natural pause between the meetings that were already discussed. And scheduled um that three J has held with the community. I don't think we have anything else upcoming on the calendar, but I'm willing to be corrected if I am. Off base.
Regarding the relook process, um no, there's nothing firm on the calendar right now in terms of next step. Um there, as far as the relook process goes, there is still a planned but not date certain advisory committee meeting. Fourth advisory committee meeting, um but that date hasn't been. But then yet, um I think there was wanting to be time to kind of gather the information from the last um workshop. And I think that there was kind of an open question of with the new council coming in, was there opportunity and interest to meet with you all, you know, that sort of thing? So I think that um, but anyway, right now, there is no date certain next meeting for it.
Okay. And I think based on some some discussions that we have. Had during the course of our our previous meetings, that. We are potentially looking at a work session to discuss the relook and include both. Three J and the um RAC members. Do we want to have a bit of discussion about how we want to proceed on the relook? And whether it makes sense to schedule a work session, what during this kind of natural pause? And the work that's been done already and the the data gathering that has happened.
Sure, I would I would love to see the um, the relook discussion go into a work session for us all to learn more about what's been discovered. Um I remember, again, back to my information coming from the version, they're saying that there was a real concern about um. Listening to the community and creating opportunities for community engagement, which I think the relook has done, and and. And in good faith that the city came back and said, yes, we'll do that, and now there's. We haven't seen all the results of that, and um there are a lot of community members that have been involved, and I've been to a couple of recessions where tables are full and. And uh people are coming in to write on the boards and things, and so I would hate for all of that great. Community engagement, regardless of the content, regardless of the topic, to be lost, and I think that people have put in a large effort. And that um we should follow that through, and 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 it's a recommendation, it doesn't have any. It's just a recommendation to council, um and a recommendation to planning, and then decisions are made about the recommendation. And I don't think there's any reason to stop. I know there's some questions about whether to stop it or keep it going, or those sorts of things, but I think it has been a process. That um with a good investment by the city, and um and we should build on that and let that follow through.
Counselor Dunbar?
Yeah, so just piling on, sorry, but piling on to what uh what was just said, I think. It would be good to have a joint working session with the the RAC, uh the public and the council. Uh for us to discuss um what's been done, um there was uh. On January sixth, there was a significant amount of public comment, uh desires of. Community engagement, I think that was a good process. Um I personally attended a couple of the RAC meetings and. Received some good information, so I think it would be helpful to uh include that, but I don't think that's anything that we need to uh. Have any vote on today. Personally, I think we just, that's something that we can work on, um getting on to a future agenda.
And I think, Mandy, did you have something you wanted to add?
Um in addition to the public, just the public engagement and and sharing out of the findings, I would also like to understand the net total cost of this. Effort is to the to the taxpayers and the community, what remaining deliverables are tied and remain. Um as a result of what of um any contract, any contract agreements that we have outstanding. I realize that might be privileged, um and not public, but at our respect, and you um saw future conversation.
On the 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 cost of the relook? Oh, that that's that's part of the resolution in December on contingency, that the contract. Is publicly disclosed, the cost was part of the the resolution and the on December sixteenth. But we'll bring it back up, and frankly, I think, um you know, um in addition to the comments. You know, we'll have, we can have the consultant come to the the work session. I can make the the scope of work that that's in the in the contract itself, you know, send that out to you all. Um so the bottom line is it's not privileged, it's, you know, the vast majority of what we do is is open and public, or if you are interested in the information. Unless it's an executive session, we'll hand it up for you, it's okay. Um but that one, that one's out there recently, but we can bring that all in one package for you, um depending on work session or how you want to do it.
Okay, I think I would add to this discussion that. How questions are asked definitely affects the outcome, and I think that the work done to date on the relook. Was crafted to. You know, be be asking the community how they felt about a very large scale. Urban growth boundary expansion for some specific industries which caused. Points of contention within the community. When we start talking about data centers, when we talk about semiconductors, those are hot button words. That get people fired up. So I think as we review the data that has been gathered by the relook committee so far. And we discuss how to move forward, I think we need to keep in mind that. The feedback which has already been provided was under that context of the. Massive eight hundred and fifty acre expansion. And that we may need to ask some additional questions, revising the scale, revising the composition. Of um that potential development and gather public comments. Potentially through three J, potentially through other means, on those um items as well.
Uh just, just to clarify, the the survey that's online right now for the relook committee capturing public input. That has three, three different maps, right? Like one is for four. Right, so we're we're gathering that data right now, is that right?
Yeah, there has been some, as I understand it, recent change towards there being multiple options, but certainly when this was initially. Brought out and some of that data that we would potentially be reviewing later on was absolutely gathered under the umbrella of there being. A single option, so I think we need to call that out carefully and make sure that we're parsing the data based on the questions that were asked.
I think those are all good work, work session questions, and um and there are four maps and four different things that go from. Euro to the the larger, uh initially eight hundred and fifty three acres, so. Um that's it, and then two in between, so that's where it's at right now, from the data, the data generating that next step. Um but I think those are all great questions for the work session when we get there in terms of formulating, um what we want to see, but. Uh and I think there'll be responses to what we hear too, so excited to have that come of course.
I also want to go on record just as saying that as we proceed with the relook. There is absolutely no expectation in my mind that we have done comprehensive community engagement. And achieved the goal of getting opinions from all the stakeholders within our community, so I just want to say that very clearly.
Uh Bill, can you remind me when we do the budget committee sessions is April? I apologize, I, it's blanking me.
We, um no, no problem. Um Councilman Payton, what we tend to do, what we have tended to do is formally kick off the budget committee. Process in April. Um, um, we're, what we are working, um. I think, I think what we're going to do, what I believe is on the agenda on the twenty first, at least part of a work session anyway. Is to kind of kick off um discussing North Plains Budget One-on-One, so that. Far ahead of time, we can kind of think about maybe that schedule change, maybe it might change because we have a lot of new people. And so um it may change, but typically it's been April. I'd like to see it happen a little bit differently. Kicking off with Tuesday, just so there's more info out there sooner, but.
Totally, and and the reason why I ask is I think um the fiscal impact. Is a really important piece to the pie to know, um so I I would also entertain, you know, a a work session for. Relook Committee, and I also um would just implore this council to. Really dive into the budgetary part of the of the city, um because I think that's a really important part um of sustainability and understanding. What it, what is three years going to look like from now, right? Like we're we're struggling, we're struggling to pay um to even mow the grass. Right, without raising the water bill, um so I just, we're trying to get a, get a guideline of, um you know, where where we're at. For the budget season and also coincide with the relook committee. I think we've timed that pretty well.
That's our attempt.
Okay, any more discussion on the urban growth boundary relook? At that point, I think we have item nine, new business, um regarding our city attorney contract, and. This is another case where words on an agenda are perhaps a broad umbrella for what we maybe want to talk about. Um at this point, I think, under the heading of fiscal responsibility, I would introduce. A concept that we um request from the H. Um to review some itemized billing um on both the referendum appeal. Um and any other work that is in flight, um or has been completed recently. Since the election, for example, just as putting a pin at a point in time. Um and I am, yes, Counselor Dunbar.
Um so at this point, since this is closely related to what we've already uh. Postponed till to the next session, um I would. I think, does it make sense to have this conversation now, or is it something that we have after we have the conversation? And make the the decisions that are are pending uh around the legal review?
I think there are potentially a couple different aspects of that legal review. There is certainly the appeal. Um and that portion of the court case, but there are also potentially um. More general budgetary questions about legal spending, um and just making sure that this current council has. Had a chance to understand um what we are investing our legal dollars in and make sure that it is well aligned with current strategy.
Yes, and and uh legal counsel, uh Jacobs, I mentioned that, I believe, or as Bill said that there were no other pending. Uh there's no other pending litigation, is it correct? Or it may have been, Bill, I'm sorry, I may miss this up.
No, um, because we don't know, um, no current other investigations. Um but there's, there's no, there's no other legal action um before the city either. This is pretty much it.
So maybe let me ask, ask this a different way, um and this is just an educational item for me, that. For the city, um obviously, we have council engaged as part of our staff. What kinds of items generally tend to incur legal billing in the normal course of operations?
Um it's a great question, so um. Typically, most of the time, it's really just um. It'll be occasional chasing down information about a technical question. Um you know, we don't have in, we don't have in-house staff uh with legal background or or attorneys, of course, so um if something comes up, we do go to them. Contract review, questions about existing contracts, if there's any problems, if anything, they take a look at that. Anytime um we come before you with anything that you're going to vote on, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, the research that goes into it. Um to make sure you're not discussing and adopting anything that is a trap later on for the city unexpectedly. You know, th- those are kind of the most common things from week to week, and because of those are the things that happen the most. Um I guess the only other thing that kind of is in the background is. You know, uh H R issues, technical questions on, you know, state law, payroll, this, that, or the other. Um we do rely on our C I S, our, you know, our, our, our city, city and county insurance um. Entity basically for technical questions too, but it's just when things kind of come up, well, we want to be sure we're not. Thinking of something because we don't, we're not attorneys, sort of thing.
That makes perfect sense, and what is kind of the process in place for how those. Questions are provided to our council and whether there's any dialogue about. Um you know, where where they are then investing their research. Um on direct questions versus kind of some some less operational, more project-based investigation?
Well, great question, so, I mean, really, the only, the, I mean, the overwhelming number of. The overwhelming involvement that the city has in terms of seeking assist, legal assistance from the city attorney is primarily um. Actually, there's, there's, there's another dimension to this, seeing Steve over there, I should answer, I should elaborate, but. The other thing in terms of legal bills is land use stuff, um you know. We we have a major, and and this is going to come to you soon, we haven't scheduled it yet, but FEMA has a major overhaul of of. What's cons, what's considered, you know, where you can develop and finance development anywhere near wetlands, that sort of thing, that's been intensive legal. Um bill, um unfortunately, and and we're not alone with other cities in that, so. Anyway, so land use issues are, is another very big one, so regarding um. Uh Lori and I, I primarily, but Lori as well, and then on the planning side of things. Those are probably the three major point of contacts for seeking legal services when we do. Um but again, it kind of boils down to weird legal things, um it'll be a, it's usually via email. Um Chris, this has come up, would you mind taking a look at this, or, you know, that sort of thing? I mean, we have like this, all these emails in the record on different topics, so um you know, if something sounds familiar, we, we do, we don't. Without thinking about it, just go to the attorney and 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 get um assistance or whatever, um but. That's kind of how it works, if something comes up.
So for anything, is it fair then to assume that for anything that wouldn't be considered that baseline operational? You know, day-to-day type thing, that generally the process would be to engage council and get. Guidance before engaging. Um engaging any more legal fees?
Um, I mean. Yes or no, I mean, if if you all are, if you all are, if you all have directed us to do something. Um for instance, you all direct us to um. I don't know, uh take a look at the fees on the water bill for something, just. So in bringing that, in bringing something to you, like a result, either, you know, pulling together a work session. Um ultimately, what you ask us to do will lead us to a process where asking the city attorney on on technical things might happen. Um but that's, and then, but then in the course of bringing something back to you, whether it's information to discuss in work session, or it's actually put before you a resolution or whatever. Um so it is resulting directly from you all sending us off to bring you back something. Um but in the course of doing that, it's sort of kind of us when we come up against something, um we reach out to them if we need to.
Understood and appreciated. Okay, so I think. Understood and appreciated, okay, so I think really this agenda item is just. Trying to have a new council get their arms around what the current situation is and the dollars and cents of how money's being spent. So maybe the ask is something like. You let me know whether this is a reasonable timeframe for Monday, tell me if it's not, because you're gonna be out of town.
No problem.
Um that, you know, maybe we are requesting from, I'd assume Chad is BEH rather than Bill. Some historical billing information, kind of anything that's in flight. Um if there are bills that you haven't sent yet, that we maybe can get. Preview of, you know, roughly what is out there. So that we understand what our financial obligations are for business carried up till now, yes. Um would there also be an opportunity to get a summation of any sort of um lawsuits? That the city has incurred or.
Settlement settlements paid, yes.
I think unless there is a reason why we cannot add that, that's a very reasonable item for me. Okay?
Okay, I I think, I think certainly for getting that information into an agenda packet for Tuesday. Well, well, I mean, I.
Perhaps that's an email.
Yeah, yeah, potentially, um I would say the further you go back in the history, the the, you know, the forensics of that might take a little bit more time. I think probably what is realistic is is on is on Tuesday when we're back, when I'm back and before um. Before the meeting on Tuesday, what I can pull together is. Um we can get information directly from BEH in terms of billings that they've done, but I think the easiest search is just to go in and we have various. Legal services codes by department or fund, and we just pulled all of that information um. That that's probably the easiest thing, and so I can come on Tuesday with that information. I mean, I can just report to you how much we've spent by funder department, but with that will be how much has kind of been budgeted by funder department, so. You know, you.
That's part of the financial conversation that we're gonna have on Tuesday anyway.
Exactly, so you know, I I think um. I I would encourage as part of that, though, is kind of comparing where we are versus budget on legal services too. Um and then you can think about, you know, moving forward in the next budget cycle. Was that too much? Was that not enough? How did we spend compared to it? So I can, I can just focus on a report that kind of just comprehensively shows you where we've budgeted for legal services and then the spending that's been done. Um as far as like past settlements, we'll have to work with BEH kind of on the forensics of that because um. Previous city managers would, I I I think the the last one I'm aware of was was. Two or three years ago, and it wasn't like a settlement against the city, it was more. Um the city had a problem with a contractor and we. Had something done or settled in our favor because of a problem. So um but anyway, we would have to forensic look up the issues.
Okay, so that may be a longer range reporting goal, but I think for the purpose of tonight. Whatever you're able to gather for Tuesday or have already gathered, um because you were preparing for that.
Yep.
That sounds great, um Chad, if we could ask BEH to do a quick check on any. Outstanding bills that have not been paid yet, just so that we can include that in our numbers. And I would just ask, um particularly since we've. We've had some leading conversations about this appeal tonight, but we have not. Um made a decision that we be very cautious about. Investing in further legal hours for something that is questionable, how it will proceed. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I I can tell you just the status of everything, you you have a. Pending appeal before the Court of Appeals, but you're still waiting, as I understand it, we're still waiting on the Circuit Court to finalize the record, so. There's nothing happening there at this point, and then we have this hearing on the attorney fee petition. Which, as we talked about earlier, is going to be postponed until February. So there's not likely to be incurred any expenses related to the ongoing litigation. It's certainly not before Tuesday and most likely not thereafter, at least until we're, we're talking about preparing for a hearing in February.
Excellent, um and realizing that this may not be a topic for public session. The pending appeal in Circuit Court that you mentioned, just because I don't know what I don't know.
No, I'm sorry, I if I wasn't clear on that, so the pending appeal is the appeal of the Court of Appeals that that was on the agenda item. Tonight to talk about whether or not we should move forward with that or not. And so, so before we even have the obligation of file an opening brief or do anything related to that. The Circuit Court has to take certain actions um to file certain things with the Court of Appeals, which has not even occurred yet, so right now. We're not working on any briefs or doing anything at this point in time.
Excellent, I really appreciate that context, Michelle, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm 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 a little confused on why this is on there as an agenda item for the business. And um to get some clarification, so um. You know, do we have a concern right now that we are out of budget? Or our city attorney for the remainder of the year, or is that still within the context of the budget that the council approved of? Typically, the council approves the budget and then. Staff is utilizing that budget for their, to do their operations essentially, whether that's. You know, through land use or whether that's issues of just contacting the attorney.
Yeah.
So I I questioning you, Bill, are we, you know, are, is there a budget issue right now with the certi- city attorney budget line?
Um, Council McCall Wallace, there, prior to December sixteenth, when we, when, when, when. When previous composition of council um approved the resolution. Um assigning contingency budget um to some legal issues. The, there was um. The legal expenses budgeted for the Community Development Department because of. Everything happened with the UU, the UGB referendum and after. Um that was all being attributed, all of those legal expenses were being attributed to the Community Development Department. Because that's where planning and UGB and all that is. Um well, we didn't, back in June of twenty twenty-three, we didn't know what did we anticipate of some of that stuff, right? None of it. But as legal, but as things went on and legal issues with all that happened, um the Community Development Department legal budget is where we assigned. The expenses we're talking about, well, that exceeded the budget, and so that was the. And so that was the 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 motivation for. We couldn't have anticipated these legal expenses, it's going over budget for the Community Development Department unfairly. Because the Community Development Department has a variety of legal service needs, not just, you know, post refer, post referendum um legal expenses. So that was the contingency allocation to basically reimburse the Community Development Department. If we hadn't have done that, yes, the Community Development Department legal services budget would would have gone over.
Okay.
Um but for the rest of the legal bu- legal services budgets elsewhere in the in the city, um we've been okay.
So that was a, that was just a realignment uh and a new line item for that contingency item put in, and that money. That expense put there, because there were already expenses incurred.
That's a fair way to put it.
Okay, so that, you know, there's not forty thousand dollar or whatever it was, just sitting out there, there's extra money for us to move around and do something else with. But I just wanted to clarify that, but um so I guess my question is, you know, is there a problem with? The work that our city attorney's been doing and we need to talk about the contract? Or you started off by saying that you wanted to idealize billing about the referendum, the appeal, and anything that's happened since the election. So to me, that have a, is shrouding, you know, something else that's being gone after, so. I just sort of in plain speak, what is it that we're trying to do with this, this line item in this discussion?
So all of this, at least from my perspective, is investigative, that we are trying to understand the landscape of. Where we are spending on legal fees currently, what we have in flood, because even those basic. Items that you would assume would be um covered in transition have not been available information. So this is a new council trying to do its due diligence and understand where we are while making sure that we have. Appropriate transparency because spending on this particular issue has been another one of those community issues where it. Has created the perception where tax dollars are not being spent wisely, so we want to make sure that we click into that, understand it completely. And can tell our constituents that we are being responsible with their tax dollars and. Strategic about our legal hour expenditures.
So it sounds like that will be covered in the work session under budgeting one O one, and also if needed in the executive session in terms of the discussion. Um as opposed to a new discussion decision that needs to be made here tonight, we're going to be very busy Tuesday.
Yeah, just a a quick question maybe for Bill, and I apologize if you don't have this um readily available, but. Thinking through pie chart, right, we think about um. General fund and police and libraries kind of being a big, big chunk of that pie. Where are the legal services, and I know it's it's hard to disperse because every line item has a different category, but where would you categorize? Legal services in that pie chart of of, you know?
Um like, okay, I guess, I guess my my initial, I mean, the number, the numbers in front of me know, but I guess what I would say is that. Um we have legal services budget for, in the pie chart, primarily for the Community Development Department. Um I mean, are you talking in terms of like how much, what percentage of the budget is legal?
Yeah, so I'm thinking like, you know, to that point, right, like very valid to want to know where is all this going, but I'm also thinking like. There's such a bigger budget for so many other things in the city that I'm like. What piece of the pie is is legal services in comparison to, you know, general fund, police, library?
Generally speaking, for the general fund, the biggest, the single biggest thing in terms of costs, and last time I. My recollection from the budget is eighty percentish, maybe seventy-five to eighty for our operating budget, so general fund, water fund. Um and streets fund, probably water fund less so, but but personnel. Is seventy-five to eighty percent overall, and then after that. Um you know, ten to fifteen percent in there or maybe twenty is um materials and services. So in Oregon budget line, you've got personnel services, which is the one big category of public expenditure, then you have materials and services, so that's. Your attorney is your consultant, then all the supplies and things that are non-capital equipment, and then you have capital equipment, those are the three big categories, and then debt service if you have that. But by and large, attorney services is is. Um probably one of the moderately sized pieces within that ten to fifteen percent that are material and services. So overall, it's not huge, I mean, really, our big expenditure, month to month, fund to fund, operating fund is. Is all the staff that we have and then all the, you know, the cost on top of just salary. I would need to look up the percentage for you. What I can say is that the 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 Boards and Commissions Department, which really is. Costs related to city council and advising on things, there's a fair amount of budget in there, community development for all the land use review, all that fun stuff. That's probably another big one, um and I'm trying to think of what other department off the top of my head has. Um and then Finance and Administration advising on insurance and blah, 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 blah. Those are the three departments where legal services are um are are. More notable parts of the budget, but I wouldn't consider them significant, but let me, I would need to, let me, so for this report on on Monday, Tuesday. Let me, let me add that for you, but it's a great question because legal services do spend, you know, do spend different departments, different funds. Um but I would contextualize that as as personnel expenses overwhelmingly the big one for for the city um for operating flights.
Thank you for that, and so it sounds like this isn't a whale, but it's not a minnow either.
Uh you know, I I I think, I think any broad category of spending, it's, I think you all, you know. My editorial is it's your job to be on top of it and 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 our job is to do what you send us to do. Our job is to carry everything within budget. And certainly, um you know, it is is for you all to kind of have an idea, well, is, you know, is that what we want to be doing as a city? Um and that's, and that's great, but I I would generally agree, um it's an important one, but it's legal services isn't um. You know, it's an important one, but I wouldn't characterize it as big compared to some of the other ones, but we can dig into, we can dig into that on on Tuesday for sure.
Fair enough, I appreciate that just from the standpoint of transparency and us following through. And ensuring that the community shares our feeling that we are spending those legal hours responsibly. Okay. So at the moment, I'm gonna double check that there wasn't anybody who has sat here in an uncomfortable chair for hours on end and has something else to say. Okay. Anybody in the chief seats up front who has anything else to say? No? Okay. Can we get a motion for a German?
I'll make a motion to a German.
Do we hear something? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you everybody for your time, thank you for pulling this together, I appreciate it.
Hi, everybody.